Welcome to the City of Glendale's special meeting of the Civil Service Commission for November 13, 2013. May I please have roll call?
Commissioner Yakubian, here. Commissioner Devine?
Here.
Commissioner Menoukian?
Here.
Chair Ghazarian?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Hatamian is absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Minutes.
Move to approve Dispensary Board meeting?
Second.
Unanimous consent? Actually, absent Commissioner Hatamian. Next item, please.
Oral communications.
I see no cards and no one approaching the podium. Next item, please.
Recruitment and Examination Report.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, this item is a Recruitment and Examination Status Report. It shows the current recruitment processes at the various stages that are the ones that are currently open, those who are assigned by various members of my staff. As you can see, it's a relatively busy workload. In the last month, we finished a major recruitment for the police chief position, as you know, and also the firefighter recruit. But beyond that, we appear to be fairly busy in a number of the different departments, including a police officer, various recruitment processes. There's relatively busy with water and power, Parks Department, Public Works, Community Development. This item is a note and file. If you have questions on this report, any of the exams listed, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
I see no questions. Next item, please. Thank you.
Eligible list established.
Mr. Doyle?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, this too is a note and file item. It's providing you with the eligible list that have been established since our last meeting, which was approximately three weeks ago. As you can see, there are some eight lists that have been established. And as you know, the culmination of a recruitment process, the lists get established with the number of names. On this, for purposes of this report, in the far right column, you'll find the number of individuals who made it to the eligible list. You can see, we had some big recruitments. Once again, I'll reference the fire recruit, which has, which started with over 3,200 applicants on our open list and ended up with 183 on the list. Most of the list, the other recruitments are much, much smaller. But again, it's a pretty good illustration of how competitive our processes are and how challenging our exams end up being when you start out with such a large number and end up with a small number on the list. So again, if you have questions on this, I'd be happy to try and answer. Again, this is a note and file item.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Doyle. Next item, please.
Class specifications for approval, library arts and culture supervisor series and library arts and culture administrator, and job bulletin for approval, senior library arts and culture supervisor, Brand Library and Arts Center.
Mr. Doyle?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, quite a few things going on here. The first being, there's been a re-titling of the positions within the library department, reflection of the new name of the library department. It used to be library, now it is referred to as the library arts and culture department. And as a result, you're seeing the positions in the supervisory series to reflect the new title. The other, the other part of it is the, really the revision of the supervisory series for the library section. I'm almost embarrassed to say that this has not been updated since 1992, which is 20 years, 20 years ago. And as you know, as you might expect, a lot has occurred in the library information service field over that period of time. The biggest being so many things now occurring in automation, whereas back then, much of the library was focused merely on books. But anyway, you see a rather extensive updating of these, these positions with really just to bring this into a more contemporary description of what, what's performed in this job. Additionally, the third item on this is a job bulletin for approval for a senior library arts and culture supervisor at Brand Library and Arts Center. And again, specifications are the, the general job description, description of the jobs. The bulletins itself are more specific, typically for a particular opening. This recruitment we're about to embark upon for the senior supervisor is one that in the past, we had done on a promotional basis, and we're now seeking to do a recruitment on an open basis, which essentially means that it would be open for anyone in the general labor market to apply. The thought being that we're trying to focus on finding that right individual with a good, strong background on really the art and music field, which is what, as you know, Brand Library is, is pretty much all about. So again, this, a lot going on with this particular agenda item. If you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. And pleased that we have Cindy Cleary, Director of Library Arts and Culture, here, as well as Narne from my staff, who worked on this matter.
I think Commissioner Devine may have a question.
I'm reminding her.
I am. I know you well by now.
Very, very good. Yeah, I do, may I speak?
Yeah, of course.
I have several questions concerning the logistics of this. First of all, at the top on our background, you indicated that the item number two is a revised class specification for the administrator. And further on down, you call it a new class specification. So is this revising an existing administrative, administrator position or creating a new administrator position?
Very good question, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Devine, these are all existing classifications, so there's nothing new. But what we have done is split out the, the administrator from the supervisory series. Previously, they were, all three of them were on one. You had the library arts and culture supervisor, the senior library arts and culture supervisor, and the library arts and culture administrator on one specification. So in a sense, it is new, but the, the, the specification is new, but the classification is the same as it, as it always has been. We just broke it out because we felt that there was a big enough distinction between what the supervisory positions do versus the upper managerial administrator level. That makes sense.
And along that line, on the org chart, on the first page, it shows that there are two administrators under the development and et cetera, and the building management. And then on the second page, it shows another administrator. So again, can I assume that these administrators are all existing and that you're just taking mechanically the description of those positions out from under the supervisor section?
Commissioner Devine, that's correct.
So there are existing three administrators in the library department?
Yes, there are three administrators. I see.
So there's not going to be a situation here where you're going to be promoting somebody from a supervisor position into this new classification of?
No. No. That won't happen until someone retires or leaves the organization.
Okay. And again, there are, at this point, no openings at that level?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have on that one. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? I have a question, Mr. Doyle. To be clear, the, for lack of a better word, the hierarchy of the library arts and culture is what? Is a director plus three administrators?
That's correct. The chair, Chair Ghazarian, the director, and then underneath is three administrators. And then below that, we have the senior library arts and culture supervisor, and then the library arts and culture supervisor. And then below that, we have the librarians, the library specialists, the customer service staff, and the other staff within the library.
And in the supervisory series that we have, in this, in this evening's agenda, we appear to have the senior library arts and culture supervisor, which is the one requiring four years of professional library work, that is one that we are seeking to fill? Is that what I understood?
That, that is correct, sir, at, at the Brand Library. If you look on the org chart, the second page far left, that's, that's the vacant, vacancy. Just under Brand Library.
Right. Oh, the one that's vacant, yes. And then, that being said, my question is, why is it that we need to fill that position with a senior library arts and culture supervisor versus filling it with a, just a library supervisor as opposed to the, you know, in other words, the one with the three years of experience would not suffice? That we need the four-year experience with two years of supervisory experience? That's the one that we're trying to fill now?
Correct.
So my question is, why are we not, do we have another person there that has, that is a supervisor with the three years of experience already?
As Chair Ghazarian, as you can see from the org chart, there is not a, a library supervisor position at Brand Library. It's the senior, is traditionally what they've, how they have staffed, the person who oversees that library. As far as why is it at that level, it's, it's been at that level for some time. Perhaps Ms. Cleary can clarify whatever the distinction might be.
And for Ms. Cleary to clarify, keep in mind, I'm assuming that the Brand Library, as all other facilities, are under the leadership of the director of library arts and culture, correct?
With an administrator in between.
With an administrator in between. Okay. Please.
Yeah, so one reason that that, or the primary reason that the, the position's at a higher level is because Brand Library is a much more complex organization. I mean, we have a, a art and music library, a recital hall, and a gallery. And it requires a different set of expertise to run that library, more fundraising, more marketing, and, and a higher level of supervision and management.
Are you satisfied with the description as it sets forth in this document?
Very satisfied, yeah.
Very well. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Second.
Second.
Very well. Unanimous consent, absent Commissioner Hatamian. Thank you. Next item, please.
Class specification for approval, groundskeeper series.
Mr. Doyle?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, this is a, a, a new series specification, and it, it's coming as a result of a reorganization within the, the parks, well, the community services and parks department. What we're trying to do is really clean up the, the staffing that occurs at the, at the park maintenance level that we've, we have. Like everywhere else throughout the city, we've had some severe staff reductions in, in this department in particular. And what we're trying to do is take what currently exists as three, three separate job series and combine them into one in a more coordinated fashion. Right now, we have, at the lowest level of staffing, a classification called laborer, which is a classification that does, you know, general tasks at, at a park with, with oversight, supervision. The next level up, if we were to look at a coordinated series, is the existing series that has a gardener and a senior gardener. And that's more, more of a position that deals with, you know, planting and growing and fertilizing and things like that. Also thrown in there, and this is what we're trying to clean up, is the classification of maintenance worker, which is one that's used throughout the city in public works and water and power and various other departments. And so we have, at various parks and facilities, laborers, we have maintenance workers, and we have gardeners. And what we want to do is take all these folks, combine them into one series called the groundskeeper series. And that's more or less what we've done here. We have a groundskeeper series consisting of a groundskeeper one, two, and a senior groundskeeper. As I said, this, the, our hope is to either through transfers and promotions to get all the individuals in these existing classifications into this groundskeeper series, so it's more effective for the department. As I said earlier, this cleans up a lot of problems that we currently have because right now, under the current scenario, there are certain things a laborer cannot do, mostly having to do with, you know, work without supervision. There are certain things that maintenance workers can't do when it comes to some of the more significant, you know, gardening and horticulture work. And so again, we, we want to try to focus all of them into one series. So with that, if you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. We do have our, our senior park service manager, Kokopanosian, is here. My staff who worked on this is unable to be at the meeting tonight due to illness in the family, but I'll do my best to answer questions on his behalf, so.
Commissioner Devine?
I just have one question. Under the experience for the groundskeeper one, it shows one year of paid experience, and under groundskeeper two, it's the same thing, one year. I'm wondering whether that's intentional or whether we want groundskeeper two to have another year or possibly two years of experience?
It appeared that they, also, Commissioner Devine, if I may, it appeared that they've added some college course requirements as the only distinguishing factor between groundskeeper one series and two series. And with that in mind, to echo my colleague's concern, I would like to also point out that the senior groundskeeper seems to have the same requirement, which is the GED or the certificate supplemented by some college-level coursework. I'm concerned because the additional minimum requirements for senior groundskeeper seek an ability to provide clear work instructions, review and evaluate employees' job performance, effectively supervise subordinates. I would think that at a minimum, that would be cause to seek perhaps a junior college level educational background. I'm, I'm open to your thoughts on that. Thank you for the, for the allowance to butt in, Commissioner Devine.
Mr. Chair, I mean, these are all very, very good suggestions. As, as pointed out, the, the distinction between groundskeeper one and groundskeeper two is minor. The experience requirement is roughly the equivalent, but there is a slight difference in the educational requirement where for the one, it's just the, the, the graduation from high school. And the two talks about supplemented by some college-level coursework. So it's a, it's a minor difference, and I don't know how flexible we can be on this. The concern, again, with senior groundskeeper, which is a lead position, the concern with imposing a community college degree of some sort, is just maybe restricting people who don't have that. Some, you know, there are some people in this profession who are really good and have, you know, some natural leadership, but they may not have gone very far in, in college. But I'll let Mr. Panosian, if he has any, any input on, on the suggestions.
Sure, appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Chair Ghazarian, members of the Commission, another distinction for the senior gardener we have at hand is the requirement that within the probation period, six-month probation period, they acquire themselves a class A or class B license, which puts them at a different classification of every year equipment that they can operate. So they do bring in the skill sets, and at the same time, the requirement is greater when it comes to licensing for the senior gardener. In terms of groundskeeper one and groundskeeper two having the same education course level, we, we had actually looked at that as an option identified. Maybe at this point, when you get to a groundskeeper two level, which is equivalent to a gardener, there's a little bit of horticultural knowledge required, so we encourage those courses and college degree courses that fit within the horticultural realm would suffice and put somebody above the rest. Now, a lot of times, we look at the education, experience combined, and we do have a lot of staff that meet the basic minimum requirements and do qualify for the groundskeeper two series. So point very well taken. The only distinction I can highlight now would be, in the senior groundskeeper series, there is also certification licensing. In order for them to pass probation, they must acquire within the six-month probation period.
I must have missed that.
That would be under the, the senior groundskeeper, under licenses required.
I, I see the class A or class B driver's license. I'm not so concerned about their ability to operate machinery. I leave that to the powers that be to put people in the right positions with the right licenses to perform physical tasks, if you will, or quasi-physical tasks. I'm more concerned about placing someone in a supervisory position, one who evaluates others' work performance, yet that person is only required to have some college-level coursework. I'm encouraged by the fact that the experience requirement for a senior groundskeeper is three years of experience in professional grounds maintenance. That would lead me to believe that someone that's been doing it for three years would certainly have more insight to supervise or evaluate others' performances who have been doing it only for one or two years. That's all I have to say. I mean, I, I, I'm not, I'm not persuaded that this is in and of itself the best scenario for me, but I'm just one person, so.
Sure. And Chair Ghazarian, we, we are open to suggestion of groundskeeper two at two-year level. Typically, when our staff goes through the process, most of them have been through the system and been within the city and employed by us. And in the past, we've done promotional opportunities for internal city staff for groundskeeper one and two levels. And most of the time, we do have staff that have been there for a number of years, so they do bring that experience along with them. We are open to that suggestion at the groundskeeper two level, bump it up to two years. We wouldn't oppose it. And it literally wouldn't keep anybody from the qualification, because even at the seasonal labor level that we recruit, which is more on the part-time hourly basis, a lot of our folks being recruited now do actually come in with experience in the field. So point well taken. We're open to the suggestion. If it makes the commission more comfortable, at two years' experience for a groundskeeper two, we wouldn't object to that.
Again, I reiterate, and I will yield in a moment to my colleague, Commissioner Devine, I reiterate, my concern is with senior groundskeeper. And, and, and what you pointed out to me is one that I've already seen, and that is the class A, class B license. Aside from that, there appears to be no other licensing or certificate obtaining as a precondition for continued employment past the probationary period of six months. Even the pest control operator's license is listed as desirable, not required, if you will. But again, I'm not a groundskeeper. I, I, I don't have a green thumb. It's just a rule of thumb for me is that if one is in a supervisory position, one ought to have a bit more than some college-level coursework perhaps, in terms of, in terms of evaluating others' performance, writing perhaps performance reports and things of that sort.
Sure. One thing to point out, Chair Ghazarian, is that we do have another layer between the senior groundskeeper to the manager. We have a supervisor classification. If you look at the org chart, in most cases, although it requires them to be, spells it out that they should have some supervisor experience, they will lead crews, the senior gardener is more of a crew leader rather than a supervisor. They will assist the supervisor and manager in informing them of the staff they have working within their, their groups, within their crews, and their performance. They won't be the one literally writing the evaluation. Our experience in our process going forward is always that the manager, at the manager level, are, are staff that write the evaluations. Supervisors at times fill in. And in terms of graduation and license required, supervisors at this point now require more college coursework, and managers require the AA degrees as part of the series that we have in play. So as far as the senior groundskeeper, they're not necessarily going to be supervising and taking the evaluation, writing, reporting. They're more of a crew lead, as based on what we have in the field, and they will assist the manager in writing the evaluations.
They're right, they're, they're...
They will not themselves be writing the evaluations.
So they're the eyes and ears for the management?
They're the eyes and ears, and the crew lead. They manage the projects in the, in the field, and, you know, you know, ultimately, given that they work more directly with the staff and the crews in the field, they can guide and help the manager write the evaluation. And we didn't want to add the...
Satisfied.
Oh.
I'm satisfied. You're, you're a brilliant orator. I'm satisfied. Commissioner Devine, I want an opportunity for him to ask his question.
Well, I agree, and I'm satisfied also in terms of the senior, but I still have a, a problem with the one year at both levels for the one and two. And just in terms of, you know, tradition, as far as moving from one step to another or a higher step, generally, experience is one of the key factors you look at. And you might have somebody there under this scenario where they've been there for two years, and you have another person who's only been there for one year, and he could possibly get bumped into the, the two position without having that two years' experience, thereby making the fellow with two years wonder what's going on. So I think just for clarity and uniformity with other job bulletins, I would recommend or suggest, unless it's going to handcuff you, in other words, if it's going to create a problem in hiring or promoting, I would like to see the, just the sequential from one year to two years to three years.
Yeah, and Commissioner Devine, I think we'll be very comfortable with that. I don't think it'll handcuff us. I think based on the training we're providing the staff now in the field, we're very confident that, I think you make a good point, that any one of ours, given the competitive process we have and the training we provide, it could be someone that has less years in the city can, you know, step over and take on a different, the higher role. It's happened, based on what we have in the field. But it's the competitive process that sets aside who has more education, the horticulture training that comes along with it, that they bring from other agencies, that they may have one year with us, but based on what they bring to the table, they can surpass and, and move on to the other levels. Making it one, two, three, the education, the experience years will not handcuff us. I think we'll be very comfortable in recruiting process. Most of our staff now can pretty much show experience for five years. And even in the future, I'm sure that we'll be able to recruit people from the field that will bring experience with them, and it will not handcuff us at all. I think we can just easily...
I have two suggestions for you.
Yes, sir.
Law school, and based on the way you pronounce my last name, Armenian Bar Association. You, thank you.
I will consider that, Chair Ghazarian.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wait, I actually have a question. The, does the educational training also echo with your staff? Do they, do, especially in the second level, do they also have college-level courses, the groundskeeper two?
Commissioner Yakubian, there are a number of educational courses provided by a number of colleges locally. What we have done, we encourage our staff to take those, those courses. And for some who are not up to being able to take college courses, whether it be family, time, and just language skills, we internally are developing our educational series and opportunities for our staff. We have, we have pesticide applicators, we have certified arborists, and we have professionals at the supervisor and manager level that we are setting courses and training sessions aside for our staff, whether it be seasonal labor or gardener, groundskeeper, whichever series we, we end up with, we're providing the opportunities to educate them so they can get ready for the future generation of the supervisor level and beyond. The goal is, and I'm a very firm believer in training, that we take it upon ourselves to train them, get them ready for the next level. I look at it as, if they're not ready for the next level, me as a senior manager, I look at it as a failure. So we provide opportunities in-house to train them, as well as encourage them to take outside courses to better themselves and get ready for the future higher positions.
So do the in-house courses qualify as the college-level courses for the senior, under the educational requirement?
It depends on who teaches it. We do have certified arborists. I myself am a certified arborist. I had to get the license before I ended up with my position. So I'm very keen on just trees and what it takes to do trees. If myself or Bill McKinley, who is another certified arborist, are training staff in those series, and we have all the educational CDs and guidelines to train them, then that would suffice. They've completed courses. And we as certified arborists, once we go through the training, we get, you know, CEU points, credits earned for continuing education. points, credits earned for continuing education. So with that, it can really fill in in the gap, if need be, for courses.
I'm just trying to get a sense of what the staff right now, what kind of experience and educational specifically they have, because I have the opposite concern. I am concerned about precluding people who may be very experienced and very well qualified to do this, but just don't have the educational piece of it, and I would hate to have those people be omitted from a potential job that they are very proficient to be able to do.
And Commissioner Yakubian, I think your point is very well taken. As such, when we're doing the training, it's not book training. We also provide training, let's say, on the mower operation, which is a big part of the gardener series, which we groundskeeper two series. To become that level, they need to be able to operate safely the mowers, the ride-on mowers that we have. That coursework, when we train them and get them certified, which is the goal going forward, will still qualify them for that position. So it's not all about literally college coursework, field work, and training that they get on certain equipment qualifies them for that position as well.
Well, in light of that, then, I mean, my suggestion would be to clarify the educational requirement piece in the senior groundskeeper two classification.
It's, the educational requirements for senior groundskeeper two is, as it stands right now, it's high school diploma or a GED supplemented by some college-level coursework.
That's the one that concerns me.
So you want to take out the college-level coursework?
I'd like to explain it a bit better. It may be, or how would you say it, internal coursework or...
Desired.
Desired? Or City of Glendale offered coursework or some coursework?
Are you okay with taking out some college-level coursework from your requirement?
For the groundskeeper two series was the question, or the senior groundskeeper?
No, no, senior groundskeeper, I would have a problem if you took it out.
The groundskeeper two series.
Groundskeeper two series.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission.
Yes.
I'm gathering from Mr. Penosian that this has not been a problem relative to any existing staff, and I, I mean, I've worked around this department for years, and it just runs the gamut. We've had people with, you know, eighth-grade education from other countries working in some of these, particularly these seasonal jobs, up to people with bachelor's degrees in horticulture and biology and things like that. So, I don't think it's been a problem, and I think what's being proposed here is, sort of strikes a reasonable balance between what the needs are. I concur completely about raising the experience requirement on the groundskeeper two, but I think, you know, the way the education is written, it, you know, there aren't any hard and fast requirements, it's all desirable. I think it would meet the department's needs.
Commissioner Manukian.
Well, as far as Mike, I mean, where I stand with it, with Commissioner Yakubian, I will take experience any day over a diploma on the wall. I mean, that's my personal opinion, but I think, based on what also what Commissioner Yakubian was saying, based on the way it's written right now, all it is doing is allowing the ability for, I guess, the courses are desirable, but it's not necessarily a requirement. That's the way it is right now, correct?
Well, not really.
No, it's not. It's education and training on groundskeeper two is graduation from high school or attainment of GED or CHSPE, which I believe is California High School Proficiency Examination Certificate, supplemented by some college-level coursework. That's, is that not correct?
If you don't have college-level coursework, you are pursuant to this, precluded from being in this classification.
We can add the word desired, if that satisfies the concerns of Commissioners Manukian and Yakubian. We can add the word some college-level coursework, desired.
That would satisfy me, thank you.
And we will be comfortable with that as well.
And Chair Gazarian is going to volunteer once a month, come out with the guys, so he understands the concept of...
I'm happy to volunteer anytime, anyplace for the community. No problem.
I may take you up on that offer, Chair Gazarian.
Give me a call.
You should.
No, you know what? I support education, but...
On my spare time.
There has to be also opportunities for people who don't have the opportunity for education.
Commissioner Yakubian, you're looking at me. My educational requirement, pet peeve, is with regards to management-level position, none other.
I completely agree, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move to, oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, if I just clarify, whoever makes the motion, it will contain really just two changes, really only affecting that groundskeeper two. The first would be making the experience requirement two years instead of one, and then the education requirement, the part about the college-level coursework being a desired qualification. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I still move with that.
Second. All in favor? Okay, unanimous consent, absent. I thought I saw Commissioner Hatamian. I thought I saw him walking and walk out.
You kept talking for some reason.
Very well. Thank you very much, Mr. Penosian. Remember my two pointers, law school and Armenian bar. Next item, please.
Class specification for approval, workers' compensation technician series.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, this is a series within my department. This is a revision of our workers' compensation technician series. Workers' compensation is a program administered within the Human Resources Department, which obviously provides medical care and serves for injured employees. We have the employees at the workers' compensation technician level. They handle a lot of the processing, oversight, and coordination of the medical billings and legal processes associated with workers' compensation. Really, what we've done is modified this position ever so slightly to add a senior-level position within the series. This is something to, I think, recognize the reduction in the staff and the fact that really more work is being pushed down to those at the technician level. And really, we have people in these, in this series who have worked, you know, 10, 15 years in their jobs and really gotten proficient, and we'd like to establish a senior-level position to recognize their increased knowledge, but also appropriate opportunity for growth and development, plain and simple. So with that, again, that's more or less the purpose of this. Again, I can try and answer your questions. I do have our work comp administrator, Ms. Cheryl Scott, here, as well as Amy Martin from my staff, who worked on this specification.
Commissioner Devine?
Is this going to be a promotional exam to get into that senior position?
Yes, yes, it would.
Will it be open or promotional?
It would be promotional, and we have currently three workers' compensation technicians, two of whom have been in the job a very long time, and so we would probably look at our budget in the next few months and see if we can promote one or perhaps two to the senior level.
Very good. Motion?
Move through proof.
Second. Unanimous consent, absent my friend, Commissioner Hatamian. Mr. Doyle, next item? Oh, I'm sorry, next item, please, and then Mr. Doyle, yes.
Class specification for approval, assistant city attorney series.
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Chair, this is a revision of our assistant city attorney series. Right now, really, we have the series which consists of a deputy assistant, senior assistant, and a chief assistant level. And what we're ultimately hoping to do in the long run is phase out the classification of general counsel, which is a classification which is somewhat within the series, but it's actually a separate classification. And the general counsel is designed to place one of our attorneys, members of our staff, or the attorney staff, in a specific department to serve a specific function, such as police or, up until about two years ago, the redevelopment. Again, our current city attorney would like to phase out that general counsel classification and replace it with this newly-established title of principal assistant city attorney. So as you can see from the specification itself, we would then have a deputy assistant, senior assistant, a principal assistant, and a chief assistant, and that's primarily the change that we're doing here. If you have questions about that, again, we'll try and answer them for you. Mike Garcia, city attorney, is here, as well as Ms. Hunanian from my staff, who worked on this specification.
Any questions? Commissioner Devine?
Looking back at the librarian specs we just looked at, where you explained why you separated out that new position, why doesn't the same thing hold here? Why wouldn't this position be separated out as a new classification?
Commissioner Devine, we feel that it naturally falls within the existing series, and, again, if you look at our series, it's a pretty clear path. You look at each title, and, again, we have people in our city attorney's office who've been there two years, we have people who've been there for close to 30 years, and, you know, by including this principal there between the senior assistant and the chief assistant, we feel it provides the appropriate level of growth and development. And, again, it seems to naturally fall within that series. We could have split the series in half and had the, you know, the deputy and assistant and senior assistant on one and the principal and chief on another. We could have done it that way as well.
Okay, well, just academic, some more questions. Looking at the org chart, it appears there'll be ultimately three positions for this principal position. It shows that there are currently two general counsel and then one principal assistant. So is it correct that ultimately, we're going to be having three principal assistant city attorneys?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Devine, that's my understanding, but I'll have Mike Garcia talk about what his plans are ultimately, but my understanding, at this time, we have two general counsel and establishing this principal in one area of the department. But I'll let Mike elaborate on the, his future plans.
And plus, I'll have some more questions.
Sure. Thank you, members of the Commission, Commissioner Devine. If I heard your question correctly, is your question whether the general counsel for litigation and general counsel for police will also become principal? No, that's not really the intent. I guess over time, it would be, but the people holding these positions would continue to hold those titles, and through attrition, as people promote into other positions, so people who would promote from senior assistant into the principal, they would, instead of promoting to general counsel, they would promote into the principal assistant city attorney position.
Okay, so you're going to retain, then, these two general counsel positions?
Correct.
And on the org chart, where it shows the principal assistant city attorney, is that a new position, or is there someone in that position now?
No, there's nobody in that position now.
So you're actually creating a new position?
Yeah, and let me give a little bit of background. So my, as Mr. Doyle alluded to, my predecessor created the general counsel classification to provide an additional, separate position of leadership within my office and somebody who had expertise in a certain area as it related to a specific department. And so, at one point, we had four general counsels in my office. One of those persons went to another department, another one got promoted, so now I have two. My feeling was, is that both the title and the job description for general counselor were a little too limiting. I didn't feel that people who were senior assistants and wanted to promote should be limited by the fact that they had to be a department-centric, because there are very large departments, like, for example, Glendale Water and Power, but there are other people in my office who maybe do a lot of work for a number of different departments, and they wouldn't necessarily fit into that general counsel classification, but nevertheless, at some point, they will have the leadership ability and skill and technical expertise to have a senior-like position in my office. And that's the reason why I'm sort of broadening the general counsel for classification, because, one, I didn't like the title, and then, two, I didn't like the way it was described.
Okay, but then, if I understand correctly, you're reallocating the two positions, the one that left and the one that promoted, the two existing general counsel. You're reallocating those, and those will become now the principal.
No, I don't have any vacancies in my office, so at some, at the time, I want to make promotions. I want to, rather than having to promote someone into the general counsel of a classification, I want to promote into the principal assistant city attorney.
Okay, so, again, then counsel had to approve a new position for the attorney's office. Is that correct?
They had to approve the titles, and then, if I, at some point, if I wanted to hire someone directly that wasn't working for the city, then, yeah, I'd have, they would have, the council would have to approve a new position. But I'm not, I'm not asking for a new position with a new body. At some point, I'll be asking for promotional opportunities.
Okay, and the last question, that's not really related to that, but I was looking over again the minimum requirements for the deputy, the assistant, and so on, and I was surprised to see under deputy city attorney, under experience, it says none. And then we go on, jumps to the assistant city attorney, three years, senior assistant, four years, and so on, six years. So I'm sure there's a logical explanation why a deputy needs no experience to work for you.
Well, essentially, Commissioner Devine, the deputy is the entry-level position within our office, and so we could offer someone who's just recently graduated from law school to come work for the city. The reality is, when we usually have a deputy position, we get a lot of resumes from a lot of people with a lot of experience, but it is, it is an entry-level position, and no experience is required other than having the degree.
Okay. Doyle, thank you.
I'm laughing, because, yes, that's a, that's a baby prosecutor, they call them in the DA's office, that would be a baby deputy city attorney, that's what, that's the word is. My question, Mr. Garcia, is that in reviewing the series as a whole and looking at the, looking at this chart, I saw the position of deputy city attorney litigation, which is under the general counsel litigation risk management section.
Yeah.
But I failed to see, and perhaps Mr. Doyle can tell me why, I failed to see it specifically set forth in the interdepartmental communication that we have in our agenda. There is no separate listing for deputy city attorney litigation, and whether or not that specific job position, since you're here, I'll ask you. Does that, is that also an entry-level position, or is that a step up from a deputy?
No, it is, and I apologize, our org chart is partly just showing lines of promotion, but partly showing some of the functions in our office that are separate. So the deputy city attorney litigation, that's just a person's title. He is a deputy city attorney at the same level.
Assigned to that litigation unit versus any other administrative or...
That's correct.
Transactional. Very well. And then the question, I guess, I had was, I seem to recall some time ago, there were, there was general counsel not only for the police department, but also the fire department. Is that correct? Was there such a thing, or no?
The only positions that we've had general counsel for were police, public works, redevelopment at the time, and litigation. So as a position, someone was, at the time, able to promote.
Water and power at one time.
And water and power, correct. So, those are the positions that we have, but, again, it was all, they were all within the general counsel classification, and then Mr. Howard, my predecessor, just gave them the title associated with a particular department.
So the esteemed Ms. Marino, who I believe is general counsel for the police department, her position is not affected by this request for a principal assistant city attorney. However, when and if you see the need to promote or hire from outside, you will then be hiring essentially someone who will be, would that person be at the same pay scale and the same seniority or the hierarchy?
Yes, they'd be at the same level.
As a general counsel is now?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second. Unanimous, unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Unanimous consent, absent Commissioner Hatamian.
You're giving me a lot of material today.
Yes, I am giving you a lot of...
I'm staying quiet.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports information.
Mr. Doyle.
I believe we're on, oh, reports and information, we have none.
Very well, thank you. Next item, please.
Agenda forecast.
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, our meetings the past few months have been... Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, our meetings the past few months have been, you know, somewhat busy, and we have, as you know, many closed-session items to address. As we come to the end of the year, we're not going to have a meeting in two weeks due to the Thanksgiving holiday, but we will have a meeting on, one meeting in December, on December the 11th, and probably a lot of specifications, as well as, we will probably want to introduce you to our graduates from our Glendale Leadership Academy and Glendale Supervisory Academy and whatever else comes up as far as any closed-session items and disciplinary items. So it's hard to predict at this point, and obviously, there won't be a meeting on December 25th.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Civil Service Commission staff comments.
Any comments? I have a comment. I would like, on behalf of the Civil Service Commission, to congratulate those individuals who were promoted earlier this afternoon in the community room of the Glendale Police Department through the following ranks. We had Sergeant Tigran Topajkian and Sergeant John Gilkerson, who were promoted to the rank of lieutenant, and we had Officers Rosas, whose first name escapes me right now, and Ernie Gaxiola and Matt Zakarian. The three of these gentlemen were promoted to the rank of sergeant, and I, for one, would like-
Not Zakarian. Alex.
Alex.
Alex Krikorian.
Krikorian.
And Scott.
I knew it was an Armenian.
And Scott Holmes.
Scott Holmes, that's it. I'd like to congratulate those gentlemen. It was a very moving ceremony that I attended along with Commissioner Sam Manukian. I don't know if others were there. I know you were there, Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Devine was there.
Mr. Devine was there. He's always there, but I didn't see him. Thank you very much for their service to the community. Thank you. Next item? Oh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna, is this?
Next item?
Next item, next item.
Closed session. A, public employee appointment, similar qualifications transfer, water quality manager. B, public employee appointment, similar qualifications transfer, accounts payable technician. Three, public employee discipline deliberations, I'm sorry. C, public employee discipline deliberations, and D, public employee discipline. And please note that item number 13D has been pulled from the agenda.
We will now go into closed session, and we will be reporting out, I believe-
But not on?
Yeah, on at least two of them, but perhaps three, and it won't be on camera.
It will not be on camera. So this concludes our televised portion of this evening's Civil Service Commission hearing. Thank you very much.